All right, I will call to order the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February thirteenth at nine o'clock AM. Mr. Veder, roll call please.
Hall?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Yeah.
Schwartz?
Here. I'll just note I'm just being remotely because I'm out ill today. I thank Supervisor Tralka for sharing.
Tralka?
Here. We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Okay, public comments. Do we have anybody that would like to provide public comment? Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to provide public comment? We have non-claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Weedner?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is four hundred seven thousand, two hundred nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. That includes just a couple of architect or engineer payments, one for the courthouse renovation project to Envision of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, and one to Origin for Cedar Valley Nature Trail work. That's thirty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. And we are also making payments today from the sixty-fourty fund of three thousand, five hundred ten dollars and seventy-two cents.
All right, this is a resolution, so roll call please. Mr. Jameson, Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item number four, project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Wanted to give you an update on that culvert that I told you about last week in Washburn. Our crews, our guys did go out there and look at that, and it was just a matter of that grade being unattached from the culvert, we think with a cotter pin. So we're going to go out. We haven't repaired it yet. We will do that this week, possibly today. We'll go back out there and reattach that, and then it should be fine. In other news, the gravel roads are in pretty good shape. There are a few minor potholes throughout the county, but other than that, everything on the rock is tied down and is very, pretty stable right now. So can I answer any questions right now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Good morning. Mike Henderson, Director of Black Hawk County Conservation. Just a quick little add for, to let everyone know, Maple Sort Festival is coming. It will be the eighth, ninth, and tenth of March. We actually start on Friday evening with our first serving. Tickets are on sale. Some of the time slots are sold out already, so tickets are going fast. So if you're interested, go online. You can buy those tickets. It will be a great three days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials that would like to provide an update? Any on Zoom? Item number five, minutes approved, January eighteenth, January twenty-fifth, February first, February sixth, and February eighth, 2024.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign. Let's see. Item number six, we have a hearing today at approximately nine oh five. That'll come later in our meeting. Number seven, the consent agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item number eight is, under contracts and agreements, we have a resolution that the proposal received from Play Pro Recreation of Clive, Iowa, for designing, procuring, and installing ADA-compliant playground equipment and safety surfacing at four Black Hawk County parks for a cost not to exceed two hundred forty thousand dollars. He accepted in the contract awarded utilizing American Rescue Plan funding for these purposes. This project would serve to ensure that all children, regardless of ability level or demographics, are afforded access to safe playground equipment and the opportunity to play, socialize, and gain cognitive and motor skills even in times of uncertainty. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors and to be funded with American Rescue Plan funds.
Some moved.
Second. Mike?
You guys, you may be aware, we attempted this one other time, but we only got one bidder. As we tried to work through the process, we got quite a ways away from the RFP, and so we decided that we needed to back up. We ask you guys to go out, if we could go out for bid again, which we did. This time, we restructured the RFP, and we must have done it right. We had six bidders this time. So we did kind of then turn that into, we interviewed all that were interested, and we have chosen one. We feel really good about this contractor, and so we would like to move forward with play equipment in those four areas.
Can you speak to, be specific on those four areas?
Yep. McFarland Park, Hickory Hills, Black Hawk Park, and Siegel Cove.
All right. Any other questions for Mike?
Mike, this is Tom. The park down the street, how's that meet requirements?
It is ADA-compatible, and we made sure that when we built that, and that's why we wanted, we're after these four. Those four parks have playground equipment, but none of those meet the specifications that the one at Mulberry Street or the play equipment at Big Woods Lake meet, and we wanted to get all of our parks up to date.
Any other questions? All right, this is a resolution. Mr. Jameson, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Number nine A, a resolution that taxes on submitted property eight-nine-one-four dash one-two dash three-nine-one dash zero-one-three in Cedar Falls, which would have come into public ownership through community development efforts. Public infrastructure improvement of public purpose acquisition be abated, and to instruct the county register to adjust her records accordingly pursuant to statute four-twenty-seven point two and four-four-five point six-three of the Code of Iowa in the total amount of three thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Linda? Nothing there? Okay. This is a resolution. Mr. Jameson.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item nine B is a resolution that the 2024 Integrated Road Service Vegetation Management Plan be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Some moved.
Second.
Griffin?
Morning, Board. Yes, the roadside management plan has been updated, and updated in a pretty big way, just with me coming in and giving different management tactics, ideas throughout the county, like our roadside, educational roadside prairies that we will be implementing in the future, no spray policy that is being in the works currently, and other various tactics. Our new burn plan has been implemented in this plan, so, yeah. If you have any questions, feel free to, feel free to ask.
Any questions? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Jameson.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item nine C is a motion to authorize purchase of one year of public official bonding for the approximate total cost of nine hundred dollars comprised of one hundred dollars per official's bond, for bonding in the statutory minimum amount of twenty thousand dollars per official for each member of the Board of Supervisors and for the county attorney, the county auditor, the county recorder, and the county sheriff as recommended by Assistant County Attorney Michael Trinan.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Did you want to speak to this at all, Mike?
I'm just that it's, it's bonding required by code.
All right, it's a motion, so all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Item ninety is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at nine oh seven AM on February twenty-seventh, 2024 in Boardroom two oh one of the Black Hawk County Courthouse, three-one-six East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for the purchase of furniture for the upcoming multi-department renovation project to accommodate remodeling the elections and treasurer's offices and resulting in the offices of the auditor and basement common areas also being impacted.
Some move.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? None. Item ninety, it is nine, nine twelve AM. This is the hearing and bid opening for a fire alarm panel in the courthouse. First of all, we'll accept, accept a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication and notice of public hearing.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? None opposed. This is a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
Some moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Do we have any oral or written comments?
There's no written comments.
All those in, oh, sorry, Rory?
Thank you. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. Looks like we did receive one bid. This bid is from...
Rory, let me take a motion on it first here.
Oh.
We need to vote on the close of the hearing.
Sorry.
Well, we did vote, we, we haven't closed it yet. Okay, Rory, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. We received one bid from Hawkeye Alarm and Signal in Waterloo, Iowa.
I don't, I still don't think we voted on closing it.
No, okay, we'll take, all those in favor of closing the hearing after oral and written comments, say aye.
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 Opposed? There are no, there is no opposition. All right, Rory, sorry.
You're fine.
A little rusty.
Bid was received on time. Bid bond has been received in an official check. Again, this bid is from Hawkeye Alarm and Signal Company in Waterloo, Iowa. Total amount, seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Any comments or questions about the bids? All right, I'll entertain a motion at the Board of Supervisors. Review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Rory Giving, Facilities Director.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. There is no opposition. Item nine F is discussion, possible board action for hiring professional services for the Pine Crest Campus renovation project. Rory?
Thank you. So, Board, as you know, there's been a lot of action with regards to the Pine Crest facility and the ARPA funds and looking at different scenarios where we might be able to have a clinic doing some reorganization with staff on different floors and such. As you know, recently, a eligibility questionnaire for a new clinic, which included also relocating the VA Center over at the EPI facility. That was submitted in mid-January, that eligibility questionnaire. And so what we've been looking at, what's really been a driving force here is, is our deadline that's coming up, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but December of 2024. So our deadline to have a commitment and a contract signed with a contractor. So what this is asking for, and I did send out an email to all of you kind of explaining this, but what we are asking for is the hiring of an architect, just to, immediate hiring of an architect and engineering firm. My recommendation was to go with Envision Architect and Modus. After some research with Envision, they do have two staff on hand, or on two staff members that are college and healthcare architects accredited. And as you know, for those of you that remember about three years ago, I believe our, Envision was in there and did a, the beginning phases of a design as well. So they're very familiar with the building, as so is Modus Engineering. And so my recommendation today is that we go ahead and we hire those services to keep the momentum going for this ARPA project. As far as paying for those services, I'll let Michelle kind of go through that because it is outside of ARPA, somewhat.
Question, Rory, I got a question. This is Tom. Don't we have to bid those services?
If they were paid for on ARPA funds, that's my understanding, yes, they would need to be bid. But what we're suggesting today is that we move forward with those, with this suggestion in immediate hiring without taking that out for bid.
No, I, I guess I understand it's not ARPA, but don't we have an obligation to bid projects?
Rory, I'll, I'll respond to Supervisor Little a little further. This is Mike Trinan. Under county bidding policy, so we're, we're staying out of ARPA because this is replacement revenue, but under county bidding policy, there still is the option to, to contract for professional services without going out for bid, and that's what, my understanding is that's what's being proposed here.
Correct.
Excuse me, Rory, this is Chris. Are you recommending, I'm, I'm a little confused if you're recommending one or the other of the, of the two firms?
Actually, I'm recommending both. I'm recommending that Envision Architect be hired along with the engineering services, which would be provided by Modus Engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And they both worked with us before?
Yes, they both, both companies have worked with us actually several times in the past.
And the budget to use lost revenue dollars from ARPA to pay for this?
Yeah. Excuse me, this is Michelle Weedner. Yes, in order to accelerate this, we think that's the best option because there's quite a bit of design that needs to be done, and then it needs to be let, and we need to have a con, construction contract has to be awarded by the end of December, so the clock is ticking on that.
Okay. Do we have an estimate?
Mm-hmm.
Of cost?
So typically, professional services such as this can range anywhere from seven to ten percent of the total project cost. So what we've submitted to Baker Tilly was five million, eight hundred dollars and some odd change. So the expectation for cost for professional services can range anywhere from four hundred thousand to five hundred and eighty based on, based on that past practice.
And do we have a timeline? Have they, have you spoken?
I have. They actually have staff ready and waiting to go to, to, to start having conversations with the health department. The health department's going to be a key in, in working with Envision to come up with this design. I will be working with VA Department, focusing on the EPI building, which that lease will be expiring here June of 2024. So I will be working closely with both of these companies on that one.
And them knowing that our timeline to do all this, involve with this project, they can meet that?
Yes.
They believe that they can, because I was going to say we don't want to be right to December.
Yeah, when, when do we anticipate them having?
They felt like the timeline that I put in the ARPA application allowed for three months for design. Let me pull this up so I make sure I tell you correctly. Yeah, so approximately the entire project, roughly eighteen to twenty-four months, the design and approval approximately three months, and then it breaks it down for the remodeling of the clinic is six months, and the remodeling of the VA Center was nine months, totaling that eighteen-month period. So if we can get in there as soon as possible and get the ball rolling with the design, and then the public hearings taking it out for contract, we're, we're confident that we can accomplish that before the end of the year.
And it still lives, gives us a little bit of space in the event that those construction contracts, we have to, for some reason, go back to the, not complete drawing board, but we've got some flexibility. If we wait too much longer, though, we've, we've lost that flexibility, correct?
Exactly, and, and some of the concern, too, as you know, when we did the multi-department here for the courthouse, we had, I believe, six general contractors attend that pre-bid, and we only received two proposals. Just like this, when we just opened up today, we had three companies attend that pre-bid, and we received one proposal. So it's a good sign that, you know, people are busier out there, but yes, that is something that we need to be aware of and give ourselves that cushion.
And we'll be coming to the same deadline as other governmental agencies who receives ARPA dollars that are going to be in the same boat.
Well, and in the event, we wouldn't have someone to bid on it, I guess, that we'd have to take a serious look at what we wanted to do going forward, or how we'd change it, or to meet those deadlines.
It's my understanding, if we did get into that situation, we would have to take, like you said, a hard look at that RFP. There would have to be a, a certain substantial change within that, that RFP, and it could be design-wise, it could be downsizing, what have you, but then you would have to take that out for bid, and that all takes time.
And in extreme circumstances, it might be possible to do a, you know, a, a non-competitive procurement option if we have, have the, we can show that competitive procurement just is simply impossible, but we're, we're not anywhere close to that at this point.
Yeah, trying to be optimistic, but keep, consider what it'd be happening to, so, yeah, no, that's fine. Thank you, Mike.
And just to reiterate again, you know, one of the things that really stand out with Envision and Modus Engineering is they do have a great deal of experience with the Pine Crest facility over the years. We do have, there's very good companies out there, but taking that into account, that was one, another reason why, you know, I recommend to go with them. Also, I'm sure there's other companies that may have certified healthcare architects, but that is, my understanding, quite a distinction. So, and they have a, a material designer that's certified for healthcare and healthcare architect designer. So that does give me a certain level of comfort knowing that.
Well, I think it's great that we're, to this day now, it's been a long time coming. This is my priority project with the American Rescue Plan dollars, and so I appreciate everything that's been done to get us to this point. I guess I'll, I'll offer, I'll offer a motion to contract with Envision and Modus for the architecture and engineering designs for the Pine Crest remodel with the utilization, utilization of lost revenue dollars for the American Rescue Plan.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion and a second for Envision and Modus. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
We don't need a resolution, do we?
I'd do it as a resolution.
All right, Mr. Jameson, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item number ten is the work session, a discussion in regard to consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year twenty-five Black Hawk County budget. Michelle?
All right, give me just a second here.
You sent us some documents, and you, and my brother who works for the paper mill appreciates using paper.
Have to make sure you're all aware, right? Right. Okay, now. Try to make this a little bigger.
Yeah. Or definitely will look.
That's actually not the one I wanted.
Needing glasses.
No need to look up. No, that wasn't my first, this is, okay, this is what we want to look at first. So today, we're going to try and get our first glimpse of the bigger picture. We've, we've looked at, you know, all the department requests, and I don't know why that isn't changing. Okay, let's try this again.
That wasn't the one you started.
No. I'm just having, yeah, the ice when I got in here, the one I wanted to start with wasn't coming up, and that's not, that's it, but I don't want to do it, so, let's try this again. See it, but you can't. Why is that? It's the second time that's happened. I swear.
Accounting skills and IT are not compatible?
Not, not for me. My, I have family members that are really good at it, and I think that's the problem. I'm too used to relying on somebody else. But I don't, it brings up Zoom, but it doesn't have the share screen. Let's just back out. I'm just going to get back into Zoom again. Maybe that will. Problem here. The anticipation, right? All right, now. I didn't give anything for these little boxes to be bigger. Okay, I think I'm finally where I want to be. Yep. All right, so. So this is a summary of everything that we've looked at so far. Significant things to note, I did leave in a million dollars for, basically for vacant positions during the year, and as we talked about before, worst-case scenario is that means we would use that much fund balance if all positions were filled all year in one way or another, either temps or paying overtime or whatever. I don't know that there's anything else super significant in there. So are you going to discuss with us at some point, too, about where we are this year, or what we anticipate or see, think we'll be at? I guess those types of things, just curious?
Yes, I did, I did run some of those numbers. We are, when I include the employee benefits, we're already pushing a million. And I, so I, then I talked with Amanda about vacancies to, but it's hard to say, do we typically have more vacancies in the fall? Do we typically have more in the spring? And it's probably fairly consistent, so it's very possible that could, I think, nearly double. I don't know, maybe more than that. So at least for this year, that's a, that's a big variable. And I think Amanda can speak more, maybe, to hiring and maybe what. And I think Amanda can speak more maybe to hiring and maybe what we see as trends in the future. Since the pandemic, I think finding employees has become a whole new ballgame, so it's, it's not necessarily an easy thing to do. Then on page two, I've got the general supplemental fund, which there are specific activities that we can fund using that levy. One of those is, of course, that transfer to the general fund for employee benefits. And I, I should back up a bit. This version that I'm showing you right now does not add any of the new positions that have been requested. It leaves the community services funding at the hundred thousand that we had in previous years. And it also does not, includes very little capital, like maybe a hundred thousand out of our requests are over a million. So those are three big things to keep in mind as we look at this.
Any reason why there's a hundred thousand in it or why there's the hundred thousand you say in it and nothing more?
Or the community funding, just because that's what
Oh, okay.
What?
You said from the, from that capital, you said the, the things that were included?
Um, just the way some departments budgeted, they were in there and they were small in equipment, so I left them one of them. Probably the largest of them might be that increase in CGS funding, because that, that was capital, that's sixty-three thousand of it. And just a couple other small things.
Would it be, would it be possible, doesn't have to be today, but a future meeting, to see these numbers with the highest point for both community, I think there was seven hundred thousand, not saying that's where we're gonna go.
Well, that's coming.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
We'll get to that in a minute. I, I wanted to show you both the versions. So this will, this shows you, I guess what I'm gonna call kind of a base version. And I, I'm not saying much about these, because I feel like we've talked about most of them in the departmental presentations at this point. The rural basic levy. This is an interesting one, because the sheriff's is a slight decline. Partly as longer-term deputies are retiring, they're being replaced with people that don't make quite as much. So there's a pretty stable there, but a slight decline. And then the debt service levy in this version, I am showing it decline because we are, our current debt outstanding, we don't necessarily need to tax for everything that we're going to pay. So our total, when you get to the end of that picture, our total property tax askings are about thirty-six, just under thirty-six point nine million. That's an increase in collections of four point four percent.
Thirty-eight point nine, looks like.
Yes.
Thirty-eight point nine.
I'm sorry, thirty-six point nine million, I think, in total taxes. Are you seeing something different?
Oh, in the tax.
Okay.
The reduction, the percentage, I was looking at the reduction, yeah, debt total.
For debt service, yes, I'm sorry. Yep, gotcha. I can't see that column on my computer, because it's covered up by something, so forgive me if I'm missing things. So that is our first version. And then I also believe I have. This is what the tax impacts would be to our individual taxpayers. Different types of taxpayers. And this is a, this is an unusual year because of the revaluations. As you remember, now every two years, the assessor has to go in and, they don't reevaluate every single property. But TJ was here and discussed with you how they do areas and, and things like that. So, uh-oh. What happened, but I thought I just pulled up something else that went away. Such ridiculous. Okay, I have to go back and stop checking. Okay, so, yeah, now you're seeing what I want you to see, I think. So you can see we, our property, our taxable valuation increased two point five nine percent this year. And I'm on the county valuations, tax askings and tax rates, and this is for the initial draft again. Matches the property tax sheet we just looked at. So this includes no new positions, the stable community services funding and virtually no capital. So that would bring our urban tax rate to five dollars and fifty-five cents, which last year was five dollars and fifty-seven cents. So down just a tick. Rural basic also down a little bit, three fifty-five now was three sixty-six. So your, our total tax rate would be nine dollars, just under nine dollars and eleven cents versus nine dollars and twenty-four cents last year. And then as we go through the different property types, the impact on a resident, our urban residential property, they would see about a one point eight percent increase in taxes for each hundred thousand of taxable value. That's five, five dollars and fifty-three cents a year is what our, we're, sorry. Urban residential would rise. A rural residential, and you may notice, I, there is a, a row on there for equalization or revaluation. I got these percentages from TJ. These, this will never probably represent an individual property, but this is the revaluation increase for that class of property countywide. So TJ's saying that urban residential property values rose twenty-one percent. Then we had the huge change in the rollback that brought it back down quite a bit. So the actual taxable portion of that hundred thousand dollar home is only rising one thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars. It's, it's just an interesting formula of how that works this year.
And we're locked in at the rollback?
Yeah, unfortunately, we're locked in at all of that. The only thing we
Is better than them coming back to us halfway.
I mean, I guess, yes, I guess the legislature could always choose to do something like that. And I, I, well, we'll talk about that here in just a second, because I do have a bit of a concern about something they might want to affect.
Only one?
Rural, rural residential, they're, they saw a bit higher rise in the revaluation to twenty-four percent instead of twenty-one. So they're, and they're subject to the full tax rate, so their tax increase would be eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents for a hundred thousand of value or three point six six percent. Still probably in the range, right? However, the, the next one is the one that really concerns me. Commercial property had, had a twenty-four percent revaluation, according to TJ. And you'll notice, I bumped up the value of a commercial property from one hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, just because I think that's much more reasonable property size. And it also allowed me to deal with the two-tier property tax. If you remember, now they've changed our property tax starting last year. The first hundred and fifty thousand on a commercial property gets the residential rollback. And then the rest gets the commercial rollback. So I wanted to have an example that tried to show all of that.
Well, thank goodness it's not complicated.
No, exactly. It's very easy to figure out what you owe in your taxes, right? So, so for our theoretical property, the ugly thing is their taxes will rise twenty-three point six percent. And on this particular example, it's five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty cents a year, which obviously is different for everyone. But that is, I think that's gonna be difficult for the legislature to accept. But that is the function of the formulas they put in place and they, you know, they do have the two-tier taxing. So they are getting the benefit of the residential rollback on the first portion. The next property category is industrial property, which TJ said it was about a five percent valuation increase for them. So their taxes, well, and I used a million for this, just to kind of show the difference there. So their dollars look like a lot. They rise a hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy cents. However, that's only a three point four seven percent increase. And the egg property with, they had a twenty-three percent valuation increase, but they also had a different rollback. So they will actually see a reduction this year of forty-one dollars and ninety-three cents or nearly five percent. Because their roll, primarily because their rollback fell from ninety-one percent to seventy-one point eight. And I still, I'm throwing in the multi-residential, at least for this year, just because it wasn't very many years ago that that was taxed the same way as a commercial property. And those used to be a hundred percent ten years ago. Now, you know, now they're at ninety, but multi-residential is now truly taxed as residential. So it is the same as an urban residence. Although, yeah. Just the way that one works, they do have a slight tax increase. Hope that's the right version. So the impact to commercial property is probably somewhat concerning on this. But those are things we don't, as we all know, we don't have any control over, right?
And those are, those are increases that are gonna be statewide. And might be at different levels from each county, right?
Right, the revaluation ratios may be different, but you're right. The, the general concept is statewide and when they do that rollback, that does take into account the statewide revaluations. So in a way, it is, I believe it is factored in.
Yeah.
All right, now, I'm having, trying to get this all set up ahead of time, but we're gonna see if I can get my screen to change. Yes, all right, progress. Hopefully, this is gonna get easier now. So the next version I wanted to show you includes the new positions requested. And I, I just bumped up that community funding to the request amount. So that's an increase of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, just in that line. And then the, the net impact of the new positions, and some of them are just, one of them at least is just a transfer from a non-property tax funding to property tax funding. That total impact to the general taxes is about three hundred and fifty-five thousand. So we have about a million in between those two things. And the significant piece of that is you know what, this is not the right one. You're seeing the right one. Okay, good. It was just me. I don't know what is going on. Oh, there's gremlins in this little thing here. Wasn't seeing the row I wanted to point out. And then it's not the right version, okay. I hope you have the right version in your packet, but I'm going to look. Yeah, you do, I just don't have it here. Okay. And let me go find it. Apparently, I had some problems naming things last night. What concerns me, and you can see it on the handouts you have at the right, get to the top of the, no, the bottom of the first page, that third line up. In order to fund those, we, we have to use fund balance, because we no longer have enough capacity under that three dollar and fifty cent basic levy to even just do that. And this still doesn't include anything for capital, so that, that is a concern I have. And I think we're starting to see the impacts of some of the legislation. I did not expect that to happen until next year, but we did put in some, some large things with the community funding. So.
So the, over that three fifty limit, you're saying is that seven hundred and twenty-four thousand?
Yes.
Nine fifty-seven.
I am saying that. Never made, you know, I don't know, we can talk about the vacancy pool. I don't know how high we want to push that, but that, that kind of does the same thing, I guess, if you budget more for that. So that will bring, those are the only, really the only changes on here. So I'm just gonna go to the bottom line there and show the total property tax askings in this version, it'd be thirty-seven point one million. That's an increase in collections of five point two percent. And then I'm going to hope I hopefully, we're gonna get to look at the
So the increase in community agencies that you built into this one is the one, like if we gave everybody what they request?
The application amount, yes. It just, I just did, I didn't know the better one to pick, I guess, so for now, I just, that's what I did.
And the new positions, and the new positions that we're speaking of, because some of those netted out to not be new positions. So there's a limited number of
But there is, there, so there's one, we've requested one in maintenance, the administrative aid. Where, this is not a new body in IT, but it's moving a body out of the sixty forty funding. Because the sixty percent funding really does not have enough to support it anymore. So that's moving to the property tax side. And there's a couple promotions too that are smaller amounts. And then one new position between either the auditors office or the finance department. Those are the only completely new positions. Then there's a promotion, potentially in IT, turning one part-time position into a full-time position in the health department. And that might be everything.
Three full-time.
Hopefully, I haven't forgotten any. Yeah, yeah, so then I did give you
Requests.
Yeah, the hypothetical tax increases, if you choose this option to again, for the urban residential, that's only a two point seven six percent increase. Rural residential, four point two four percent. Commercial property now is twenty-four point seven six percent. Industrial at four point four two, egg still falls, and the multi-res has an increase. So then I tried to do a chart to just kind of summarize those. That's your next sheet should be just showing you what happens under both of those. Just, I thought it might be easier for you to see them all on one page. It's kind of hard to get through all that, since it's so different for every property type, but it's, it's all there.
And that second column on the, to the right, the amount of increase or decrease, that's per hundred thousand?
Correct. Well, it's actually for, for the new, so I did, I wanted to reflect the revaluations in here, so that would actually be, like on that first row, residential, urban. It's actually for a house that last year was valued at a hundred. This year's one twenty thousand five hundred, so I'm trying to account for all of that. I had a certain reporter that used to insist I do that. Who shall remain nameless, who's sitting next to me. So, so I really was trying to show the actual impact to a house. What's difficult about this is you need to actually get the assessed value of your own home, apply the rollback. If you really want to know what your tax bill will be, because everybody's home value is different. And you may have seen that amount of revaluation, you may have seen more, you may have seen less. So this is just an example.
Look what you did, Tim. Always met the question.
I know, he just was wanting me to report fairly, I guess.
I do have a couple TIF questions. Generally, and, and, and I'm not against TIF, but they're such a strange amoeba.
They are.
Generally, what type of property is in a TIF? Commercial?
It can be. It can be any type. There are sometimes some special rules involved in housing TIFs. But any, it just depends on where the boundaries are drawn. And so, the way then that works is, after the date that that TIF has begun, there's a base value. So like, if you say a house is a hundred thousand, and you have ten houses in there, you have a million dollars in the TIF on the base. Then, as a new home is built, or as those houses are revalued, there's incremental value that's added to that TIF. So you've got the base sitting here, and then you've got some additional on top, we'll call it. And that is the increment that then can be used to pay obligations of projects in the TIF district.
And there comes a point in time where funds can be rolled from that TIF into general funds. Does the county realize a monetary benefit from the actions of the cities?
Yes. Yes, to all ways. If, if a city releases value, we will get our percentage of that. And so, when it's in the TIF, that incremental, only that incremental, we always all get the base, right? But that incremental piece is you, when it's, when they're done needing it for the projects, that... I mean, the intent of that is, you need that to make the projects happen, right? So, the idea is, we'd all be staying at the base if there wasn't a TIF and there wasn't a new project. We'd all just keep getting the same amount. There'd be no growth to help us support additional costs. So, we get to have a project in the TIF. We say, okay, if you will come build that building, we will give you rebates, or we will pave a road, or we'll do whatever grant. After those are all paid off, the theory is that that value, that incremental value for that new project, then is released and goes to the base, and all the taxing body get their share of it. So our share is typically seven-ish percent, probably, of whatever the release is.
And we did have, not too many years ago, a release from, I think Cedar Falls, maybe in a TIF. Yeah, Tim probably knows.
Tim can probably answer that better than I can.
Yeah.
Yeah. Led, it was about a million dollars. The city of Cedar Falls put one of their areas back in and took it out of TIF for accounting reasons. The county received a million dollars that year. The following year, they put it right back into TIFs. I'm assuming it was in a county. But just one area, we received a million dollars in taxes.
And that, I think the reason that one happened, you can only, you can only, as a city, or the, let me rephrase that. The entity that maintains a TIF district, they can only keep the revenue if they have obligations that they're gonna spend it on. So they have to have a contract, similar to us with ARPA, that we have to have contracts. They have to have contracts to do projects. And I know there was a year when Cedar Falls did not have any. So that is why they had to do a large release, is because they didn't get those contracts in place to certify the debt. So it definitely, it has an impact on all the taxing bodies in the county. And it's, there's a difficult balance there, I think, to determine. The way the law is written, you are able to, let's say, now we have project number two, right? It's year three, we're almost done paying off project one, but now project two comes, and they need assistance. At the same time, let's also remember, the state legislature just says, "TIF bad." People shouldn't use TIF, right? And so, as a city, you, you know, you've got this project partially done, you've got this project that you're entering into, you hope you're gonna have four more projects down the road. When you start hearing people talk about, well, you should release, you shouldn't get that TIF, we're gonna give it back. What do you do? You think, I've gotta have enough money to pay off this project. I already entered into an agreement to do that. And your, your other choice as a city is, if you don't get the TIF increment to do it, you have to do it with your general fund, which most cities can't afford, quite honestly. So you, you, you know, they've kind of incentivized, in my opinion, cities to keep taking all the revenue, even though there's some timing, there's some cash flow differences of when they're gonna pay off those obligations. But that's created part of a problem now, I think.
Double-edged sword.
It is. That's why I said, there's a fine line where we're getting enough to keep projects going, but we're also not starving the city or the other taxing bodies in the county.
And it continues to come up frequently, I think, just because of the counties and the schools that miss out in that.
Yeah.
And...
They miss out, but I also think...
Supposedly, I know.
They overlook the fact that they might not have gotten it at all. You know, that's the hard part. That's why there needs to be a balance.
That's the double-edged sword.
It is.
Because it needs to be a balance, instead of us, yeah.
Exactly.
Which is tough.
It is. Very difficult.
So, as long as cities continue to do contracts for projects, we never go back to receiving a portion of that?
That depends. Nothing can be simple, right? So there are two basic types, and, Tim, you can chime in anytime. You're the expert.
Right. If it's an urban renewal TIF, in which case, the city that creates that TIF district declares that area to be slum and blight. Sometimes, cities don't like to do that, because they have to declare that they have slums and blight. But if they declare it to be slum and blight, it never goes away unless they vote to make it go away. If they call it an economic development TIF, it's limited to twenty years. Any, any one that was created before nineteen ninety-five is perpetual, but any new economic development TIF created after nineteen ninety-five is limited to twenty years. After twenty years, it goes away, and the increment that was created goes back to all the taxing bodies. We had, the city of Donkerton's TIF went away this year, so all of that increment came to us. It's not a large amount, but, for example, that's what happens. There are also housing TIFs. You had asked earlier, what kind of property can be in a TIF district? Any, any class of property can be in a TIF district. If a city chooses to use the TIF increment revenue to assist a housing project, it's limited to ten-year lifespan, and we do have a few of those in the county. La Porte City has a couple of housing TIFs, or one housing TIF area with two TIFs in it. And Jessup has one that just started. Elkhorn Heights had one, but it went away. So, you can have residential property in the TIF, but unless you're actually assisting that property with your TIF revenue, it's gonna be a twenty-year lifespan or an urban renewal TIF.
And even if those, even if a TIF district is redrawn, those properties within that TIF, they still age at that twenty, right? Or, if it's redrawn, does the clock get restarted within the entirety of the TIF?
By redrawing? You can't have a TIF over a TIF. So if a city wants to, in essence, reset the base for a TIF district, first they have to release the, the area that they want to start over again. So if they release that, any increment that's built up, since they started it, gets rolled into the, into the general tax base, and then they can start again with a new one, but it starts at the, whatever the value of that property is at that point. And that happens occasionally.
I'm glad that's not complicated either.
Yes. So then, I know, in a past life, we would, we did try to do amendments to release, you would, so you could release the properties that were developed. But if you still had vacant properties that you were hoping to get a project on and hoping to need incentives for, then you do an amendment that puts that back in to an amended area, so that you're able to provide the incentives. Nothing complicated.
Do you use some TIF money, did you?
Well, it's just, I mean, like I said, county budgets are so much more complicated than city budgets when it comes to all these dynamics. And you have elected officials, you have appointed officials, you had, you have the, the boards for public health and such. So, I just want to do what's best for the county, and provide the services we need to provide, and still be fiscally responsive.
Do we, do we have a sort of a running sheet of when major projects are coming, that, that are currently in TIF, are gonna be aging out of their economic development TIF? Is there, is there a...
Y-yes. It's not a, I mean, I do have a list of all the projects, but it doesn't really, it's more difficult to just say the projects expire. If a TIF district is created with a, with a twenty-year lifespan, and there's a project in there that maybe gets paid off in five years, the TIF itself does not go away. There could be another project in that TIF, so...
But if the, but if the TIF and the building age at twenty, and they renew a TIF, or redraw it, and all that you would describe, it still resets at that new value of the property, correct?
Well, if you have a TIF district with a twenty-year lifespan, and you build a road, and pay it off in three years with the increment, the TIF district still exists. All the, the increment revenue that would've gone into that TIF district starts going back to the other taxing bodies. But five years later, the city decides to put in another street. That TIF is still there. They, they certify the debt for that new street, and then once again, the increment that is there now goes back to pay off the street, and doesn't go to the taxing bodies. So, you could, you could, you could have a TIF district that, the district itself, that has a certain lifespan, where you'll have a one year, where you might have ten million of increment that's going for the TIF district, and then nothing, because there's no debt. And then they might do another project, and it's twenty million. So, it's, it's not necessarily project-based. It's, it's, and, but I do have a list of all the TIF districts in the county, and their expiration dates. We have a couple of larger ones that should expire in a couple of years. And then there's a really big gap until, like, twenty-thirty, before anything else expires.
So I just want to repeat what you, the, the two scenarios that you gave us today. The difference being only that the, the one includes three new positions, the community agency's funding it, what was that, seven-hundred?
New number, seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand. Yep.
And capital nets, same. So no, no impact at all. And the difference being from the five-fifty-three per hundred thousand to eight-thirty-nine. That's, okay.
And use of fund balance.
And use of fund balance.
For operations, which I don't like. I'm just gonna say I don't like. Which also, yeah, gives me pause, I guess, for next year, too.
Yeah. And we were at five-fifty-seven last year.
It's interesting how the tax rate doesn't change so much. Because, and again, that's because our values rose.
What's your idea of a solution?
Still working on those. Also, just, you know, I need to know what, what the board's interested in, too. So, I, I also brought, summarized the capital onto one sheet.
Thank you.
And this is a, this is the five-year. So I thought you might like to have that now, too, just to see... What we're, what departments are requesting, I guess.
So this is with no discretion at all, just everything everybody's requested, isn't it?
Right now, it is. Yes. Yeah. We've got, we got work to do to figure out what we want to do in there. Or what we can do, however you want to look at that. Yeah. So there's lots of, lots of things running through my head, but...
Mike, but...
Know what we might want to do. Yeah. But, well, I thought we need to, we need to get the whole picture out first, and let everybody kind of absorb it.
So you have nothing else to be added to these numbers?
To be added?
I was gonna say, nothing that could increase what we have today.
That would depend on all of you. Not that I know of today. I don't think there's anything more that I'm aware of that's being requested...
Okay.
...by any departments. The only thing I will say, Dan has mentioned a new building, and that nothing is in here for that. That's, yeah. But otherwise, as far as I know, everything is included. I did, I, I did add about sixteen thousand in utilities to that second version for the new buildings we'll be... I shouldn't say new buildings. The building, the buildings we're acquiring.
Raymount building?
Raymount, and the former API building, both.
Oh.
And by the way, for what it's worth, late last week, we did get indication that Raymount had sent their abstracts to their attorneys. It just occurred last week, so...
How long does it take typically, Mike, to get the, get, or to see that they are updated?
Should be two or three weeks after they submit them to the abstract company. And I meant to say, they, they had submitted it to their attorneys, their attorneys had submitted it to the abstract company last week. So, I think for whatever reason, that wasn't being done initially.
Yeah. Go now. Good. Do they get back to us then, or do we have to follow up with them?
They should get back to us, but if they don't, we'll follow up with them.
Okay. All right. Okay. So sixteen thousand, you said sixteen thousand has been added to this, okay.
The second draft.
You said you had some suggestions or some thoughts? Did you want to share?
Not yet.
Okay.
No.
Could I ask when?
Not now, when? When are you thinking? I don't know. April? How's that sound?
Good luck with that.
It's just information for us to absorb, and I assume we can approach you individually and...
Certainly.
Suggestions?
Yeah.
And get more information.
Yep. That's where we're at, so...
We'll buy you a money tree from IV.
We could use several. Each, each supervisor and I need one, and then we might be good for a while. A TIF tree would be good, too.
So we may have to look at some scenarios, I would assume.
If, if your desire, we'll look at whatever you would like to see.
Now, we have another, we have a meeting Thursday. I know we're going in the closed session. Are we, and we're discussing the budget then, as well?
I don't want to speak to that.
Yeah. And then Kathy's also was planning to do Thursday. You talked about her building, or whatever proposal.
And if I'm our HR director, so, right, we have our labor attorney, Mike Galloway's, coming up here to kind of get, just summarize all of the union negotiations Thursday morning at nine AM. So, we'll be presenting that information, kind of the direction of salaries and increases, things like that. And then, following that, there isn't really any sort of decision, but at another meeting, some point, you guys will formally approve those union contracts. So, we certainly can talk about, you know, collective bargaining strategies, which has already kind of been discussed, it's more to just brief you all on how things were costed over multiple years of the contracts with regards to the, the wages. So, and the study and everything. And then, yeah, following that, I think Kathy's got a topic, and then other budget. You know, one thing we haven't talked about yet is, for, after union negotiations would be the non-bargaining and elected official salaries, because the comp board made their recommendations. So I can kind of revisit that and give those minutes to you all, but that will be something that will be discussed coming up here soon as well. So... All right? So we have pretty much put in to this, the salary projections at, you know, what the comp board recommended.
Yes.
Yep.
So, yep.
All right. So those could be changes, too.
And same with non...
Tim. Thank you, Amanda.
Anybody else's head hurt?
Yes, but that's because I've got a cold.
Well, good. Glad to know. You make a speedy recovery then, after this.
Do we have any more discussion in regard to the budget? It's quite a bit of information.
Yeah. I thought that was probably enough for one day.
Just to reiterate, Thursday is going to be a closed session, as well as a presentation from Kathy?
Yes. Yes. And if, I suppose we'll have budget on there, just in case we want to have something that somebody wants to bring up. It's on there. If not, we don't, but yeah. That's fine.
Yep. Just a, just a heads up, I'm unfortunately not able to make it Thursday, but, well...
Oh, okay.
And I'll be zooming in.
I'll be zooming in, too.
I'll be zooming in, too.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion in regard to the budget? Any reports or information from the board?
I just want to add, the Humane Society, you know, they came and presented to us, and she proposed some increases. I think I was gonna ask Michelle to make sure, was that increase built into her contract in this budget?
I did use the proposed contract amount. It's not very small, but I did put that in here.
I know it was, but I was just gonna say, so she asked if we would approve it or not, or if there were any changes. So I said I'd put it on for next week, and we could kind of talk about it then if we wanted to, but otherwise, yeah.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. There. Official.